We're gonna start tonight with a public hearing. On. Fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents in supply chain assistance funds. For rounds one and two. So this is unanticipated revenue, is that correct?
This is unanticipated revenue and it is directed toward the food service.
Yeah.
And so some of this will also be able, I believe, be able to use for next. Budget cycle as well.
Okay. I'd make a motion to accept the five fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and one in supply chain assistance. Okay, we have a motion and. Can we get a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you Daisy. And since not everybody here probably knows what this is about and why we're doing a public hearing. Charlie, do you wanna?
Carrie.
Yes.
Carrie online?
Yeah, we do have Carrie. She has raised her hand too.
Great.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to explain for the SCA funds, the supply chain assistance funds. Part of what I had also. Put in the ad was that we were going to be getting around three and that was to be determined and we've. Recently received round three funding in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and six cents. So our total supply chain assistance funding so far for rounds one, two and three. Comes to seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And this is to support the food service program for all of the supply chain disruptions. And there are requirements that go with this. We have to purchase unprocessed or minimally processed domestic foods. So I just wanted to make sure that that was made known.
Can I ask Carrie a question?
Yes.
So Carrie, with that, with that information, is this fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine, twenty-one, the, the correct amount that we should be? Putting forward tonight?
No, I was.
You need to have another, or is it the seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven? And twenty-seven cents?
Right, so the, the fifty somewhat thousand for it was for rounds one and two, and that was because at the time the ad was placed. I wasn't provided the dollar figure that we were getting for round three yet, and we have since. Received that, so I would like the board to accept for unanticipated revenues, the seventy-two thousand, three seventy-seven point twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll amend my motion. To seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Okay, thank you Charlie. And then we'll need a second for that motion and then we'll.
I'll second.
Discussion. Okay, great. Thank you Daisy. Now, you know, we go through these financial adjustments regularly, budget transfers and the like. In, in this case, is, is everybody fairly clear on what we're doing, or is this all sound like a? I don't know, something mysterious. Would anybody like to know what, why we have to do this?
Well, I understand the why of it. My question is, I think I understand the why of it. But my, but my question is, is this money to be spent in the upcoming school year? Towards for. Food, for the food services, or is this to be applied to what was spent?
Do you want me to speak about that?
The answer is yes. Yeah, Carrie, if you could be specific with that, that would be good.
Okay, so it's a, it's a, to answer your question, Christine, it's a combination, so it'll. Go towards some of the. Expenses that were incurred this school year, but it will also likely go to expenses next school year. So to date. Out of that seventy-two thousand dollars, we have utilized thirty, just, just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars. So we still have thirty-seven thousand dollars, but we haven't. Yet received the backup paperwork from the food service management company for May yet, so. We will likely have additional expenses applied to. The use of these funds, so we should have probably a portion that's still left over to use next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so is this all as clear as much to everybody? And are we ready to vote? Okay, all, all those in favor, please. Oh, yes, Nick.
Don't we need to hold the public hearing portion of this before the vote?
Ah, yes. I think you're right. Thanks for jumping in there. So if there are no more questions, there isn't. What about questions from the audience?
Just give me, I'll explain it.
Oh my, they gotta ask the public? Oops.
So yeah, we have. Two separate audiences. We have an in-person and we have a remote audience. Anybody, you know, can make a public comment, provided they. You know, follow the rules. If you are in person, you gotta raise your hand. If you are remotely, you also raise your hand. Just digitally, you can do that at the bottom of your screen. I can acknowledge you and then give you the ability to speak. If you could use your first name, your last name and your town of residence before making a comment. That would be greatly appreciated. And we'll take in-person audience, if there is anybody first, just to give the potential online audience a chance to. Accumulate. So we have anybody in? Alright, and one thing for the in-person audience, I'm gonna give you a microphone. You're not gonna actually hear yourself talk.
Okay.
But this for the people online will be able to hear.
Yeah, it's just a.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, I'm all set. Okay, I'm Corey Manley, Jeffrey. A lot of you know me already. Um, this may not be the appropriate place for this comment or concern I'm about to bring up. Oh. Is this about this?
Yeah, only pertaining to this. We're in the middle of a public hearing.
Okay, so no, I have no, I have no, I have a public comment. Someday.
Corey, we're, we're in about three minutes.
I guess I should have clarified that. Right now, this is the public hearing, so only comments pertaining to what was just discussed. We will have two separate public comment sections and the regular portion of the meeting. I'm not seeing anybody online at this point, so I feel like we're probably good to proceed.
Okay. Well, then at this point, let's close the public hearing. Alright, so the public hearing is. Now closed. And we're gonna call the public session to order. And we've already said the pledge of allegiance, the way the agenda is set up, it says, but we've, we've covered that before the. Before the hearing. And then we need to have changes to the agenda.
Yeah. We got some.
We still have to do our, you guys didn't actually vote. You just motioned and seconded. So we did the public hearing, now we gotta actually go through our vote.
Okay. So we're, so we're gonna vote then on. The question of the. Unanticipated acceptance of the unanticipated funds.
Of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay. Can we have?
Supply chain assistance funds, round one, two and. Three.
Would anybody like to repeat what Ruby just said or refer to it and have?
Charlie made his motion earlier. I think that we have that, just put it. In this place, which was to accept that. Unanticipated revenue.
Unanticipated for the all three rounds.
All three rounds. That's correct. Yep, and then.
And Daisy's second?
Yep.
If there's notice, if, if there is no further discussion, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you got seven zero zero on that one, Nick, thank you. Okay, and next changes to the agenda. And I believe Nick sent out a number of changes to the consent agenda. Shortly before the meeting. Would someone like to?
Motion to, or I will ask that we make the following changes to consent agenda. First, the approval of a foreign exchange student. Do we have a name or do we have a, is this for next year or what?
Yeah, yes, right.
So we'll hear more about that. Cool. Exciting, I remember. Yay, come on, so. Nomination of Amanda Grinstead, CMHS Special Education Teacher, effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And resignation of Robin Revard-Gustier. JGS Kindergarten Teacher, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we won't put retirement of that.
And excuse me for change resignation to retirement. Resignation of Shalina Parkinson, Instructional Associate, effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Resignation of Gabriel Bailey, Instructional Associate. June fifteenth, effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And there is a budget transfer that's extensive. And I would like to add that to the consent agenda, that budget transfer. Is, where'd that money, where'd that go, Nick, hang on?
That's already on the consent agenda. I was just providing you with the documentation for that.
Okay.
Agenda, so it's on the agenda and it's.
That's not a change to consent agenda, that's?
No, it's just actually giving the formal documentation to that.
So that's not a change, excuse me. Alright, I think that's done.
Alright. So back to Lisa.
I need the minutes pulled.
You would like the minutes pulled for?
The fifteenth.
For May fifteenth, yes, okay. Thank you. So we're gonna pull the minutes from May fifteenth. Add the items that Lisa suggested. Numerated for us. And. Now, are there, is there any discussion of the consent? Well. That's the changes, okay. So consent agenda is changed. And now let's move on to. Public comments one, which I planned would be three minutes later, I think it was five.
And I have already explained this, but there's a few people that have come in since, I'll just re-explain the rules real quick. If you're in person. Hand your microphone, first name, last name, town of residence. And we'll get you through that way. When it comes to online audience, you just need to raise your hand at the bottom of your screen. I'm working on getting the. Global participation policy up on the screen. Everybody should be able to see that now, just make sure you're familiar with that and adhering to those rules. And if I didn't already say it, first name, last name and town of residence. So I'll start with Corey, since we already know that she has something to say. Does that? Does that?
No, no, stop me. I'm Corey Manley, Jeffrey. As I said earlier, this may not be, I don't, I don't know where to start, so that's why I'm here. It has come to my attention recently that we had a senior athlete bumped out of a placement, a qualifying. Track competition. By a male athlete from another school. And so I'm just, I tried to do some, this only recently came to my attention, so I tried to do some research to figure out who to contact, to see where these. Rules and regulations start. I don't know if it's NHIAA or if it's New Hampshire Track and Field. But I'm here to just kind of start the conversation going. Obviously, I personally have concerns about that. These athletes, these girls have worked very hard. Not to be pushed out of a competition by. A male athlete. So again, this may not be the place for it. But these, these girls are gonna lose scholarships. I mean, this is a big deal to me, so. I don't know, maybe somebody, and maybe I should reach out to Ms. Linstead, maybe she would have a better idea as to who I would reach out to, but I'm just. Kind of here tonight to get this out. I don't know if anybody else, locally, anybody online that's listening. Is aware of this, but I, I have concerns and obviously I would wonder where our school district stands with that. And I can get into that and figure that out once I get further into my research, but I'm just here to kind of. Just say that I do think that's a big problem. I don't think that's fair. So, that's it. And if anybody has any suggestions, again, I might need to reach out to Ms. Linstead. But, yeah, just where do I, where should I go from here? And obviously, I wouldn't expect that anybody on the panel is gonna give me. A play-by-play and what I need to do, but just. Some of you might not even be aware yourself, so. That's it.
Corey, can I ask your question? Is this in our, in, in our school district that this had?
Yes, our senior athletes got.
I also have this.
Yeah.
Ruben, do you have anything to share? Except this slide, or is there something, no? Okay, so do you have any advice?
Yeah, it might be a Linglin's question, since she's more involved with the athletic side of things, but. I wanted to speak. Speak to the public too.
Well, I, I, I think that that's a good place to start when you have a concern like that. Thank you for coming out to the meeting. As far as. Place to start. Approaching Ms. Linstead, it sounds reasonable to me. Do you have any thoughts, Charlie?
Uh, well, because I believe athletics is covered by NH. HSAA and their rules.
NHIAA.
NHIAA and, and their rules cover competitions, so. I don't, I don't know what those rules are.
They didn't see anything on their website, but. And they were closed.
But I think Heather's a good, Heather's an insight and out.
Yeah.
Even if she could help you get through the kind of gobbledygook.
Yeah.
Policies like that were.
Right, I also had a hard, hard time. I know nobody can hear me. But I have a hard time finding that on our. Uh, in our handbooks too. The protocol and what the rules are, and sometimes I think it's a, you know, it's not like when the rules are written. You expect that this is gonna, so sometimes certain things are not covered, so. And I think it still shows me Springfield is the athletic director, I did catch that when I was reading that. So, so again, some of it, some of it, you know, it's hard to. On that stuff, so. But I will reach out to her.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in tonight. And. Nick, do we have anybody else online who wouldn't to make a public comment at this time?
Uh, no one has indicated that, but we do have a second session toward the end of the meeting, if anybody gets a, you know, comment.
Okay.
Later on.
Alright, very good. And our. We, we don't have a student rep tonight, so this will watch the superintendent's report.
Alright. Well, we have a few things that we want to talk about tonight, the end of year events. It is, it is June. Two thousand twenty-three, we're halfway through the year. I can't believe that happened. I think April came around, I was like, wow, we are. Moving fast. But we have a few changes from what has been in the past, and so. Go to that next slide. Certainly, June ninth, two thousand twenty-three, we have the graduation that is set to be out on the field. Where the track is. June the twelfth and the thirteenth, these are the changes. We have in the past had Jaffrey Grade School and RMS of the same, original memorial school the same evening. And so several board members and also myself included have kind of gone to one location, then scooted over to the other location, made some speeches and things like that. This is really nice. We'll be able to hopefully be able to have more people and be able to enjoy the entire recognition. Ceremony at both locations. They are set to be outside, but. You know, we'll see how the weather permits. I believe that that's gonna allow us to live stream, or at least maybe have better sound. On that, both of those, yes, for both of those locations. Okay.
We will be live streaming outside. We don't have the internet infrastructure. We tried hotspots the one year that we did it and. I couldn't get a quality enough video to live stream. We were having portions where we were like even below standard definition quality, just to prevent it from skipping. Should we have to move inside? I know there's like weather. Potentially projected. I know it's been changing on and off, you know, the past week plus. If we do move inside, the live stream would be offered then, so that we could allow more people the ability to see.
And then the middle school eighth grade celebration is actually set for the Pratt, so we'll be inside that one. And that has to do, they were gonna have out here, but because of some of the construction that we've had and the digging up of pipes and so forth. The ground is not quite the same as it was last year at this point in time. And then the last days of school on the fifteenth and then the sixteenth for staff. In other news, we've met, we've met twice now regarding the Route two oh two property that we have in the school district, so we have a steering committee. And that second meeting was held this past Thursday. We actually walked the, much of the property. It was actually very easy to get in and it was, it's really a beautiful piece of property. Lot of ticks, so that was, that was, you know, taking those off and making sure that we checked ourselves and so forth, but it was, it's nice to be able to. Have a group of people who are interested in saying what can we do with that property? And so the next meeting that we have, which is on the twenty-second, is, we are going to talk as a subgroup, and we, there's about twelve to fifteen of us who are. Sorry, as a sub, as a steering committee to talk about how we can involve the entire community in the planning and visioning of what could take place. At that place. Closely associated with that conversation is the CTE renovation or new construction. And so we have a couple of firms who have returned. The request for proposals, and so we have to choose one and bring that to the board at the next board meeting. And so we have a small group of individuals who will be looking over those documents and giving us some ideas of what we really. Which, which group maybe we should put forward to the school board. Having glanced at them briefly, there's a difference in cost. There may be some other differences as well that we have to look at, so. That. Is regarding that committee. So this should have been the slide prior to, this should have been the first slide where the topics were there, but I, I messed it up, so the topics and a large kind of piece of this. This report is about JGS. So over the past month and a half, and I have a lot of slides here, I'm gonna go through them fairly quickly, because some of these slides we've talked about before. But what we've done, you can see May third, May tenth, May twenty-sixth, I was there again, I think. You know, I was actually there again today and we're having conversations. We've had surveys. A lot of work has gone into developing kind of a transition plan into next year. As you know, we have. A principal who's retiring and after twenty-five years at being at that locate, at that position, thirty years at being at that location. And we have a new principal coming in, we have. Some desires really, or some opportunity to be able to see if we can make some shifts. Simultaneously to all this, or maybe, I guess, maybe not simultaneously. Before all of this, we've had an elementary committee that has looked at structures and things that they, that they think they'd like to change. Parents, some board members, teachers, administrators, and so some of that plays into this as well. We still have to have a couple more follow-up meetings or at least one follow-up meeting with that committee. So as we went through and we, we talked to JGS, rather than saying, hey, let's go and create the exact same schedule, do the exact same thing, let's. Let's see if there are some adjustments that we can make that might be able to improve the educational process academically as well as social, socially as well. And so we've shown this slide, in general, we are focusing on collaboration, community and communication. And so everything we do, we want to make sure that whatever our goals are, we're fitting right in that sweet spot when those three areas. Now. The typical process has been more of, we, you know, we. Get a schedule together, we have our classes, we put, you know, we put it together and, and we kind of do business as usual, and so. In an effort to continue to move away from this type of leadership model, which is a typical leadership model in. In schools, certainly in many companies as well, and we want to make our decisions based upon a more collaborative. Decision-making model, which is the next slide. That slide puts the administration, puts the business office, puts the school board, puts all, you know, the individuals. Who have some, what you call it, kind of the legal decision-making power into that center where the resources, we're helping other people make the decisions. Or I should say, we're, other people are making those decisions that they, they feel is best in order to move forward and be innovative and do great things for kids. And we're making sure that that can take place. And so resources, for instance, will be like, I facilitated several sessions, so I was a resource in the sense that I was facilitating conversation. We talked about some things that uniquely situate Jaffrey Grade School for moving forward in some slightly different ways. Just the fact that societies, societies change, children are diff, coming in different. We have changing leadership, we have staff shifts. Over the past several years, JGS has longs, you know, has really since, I would say, a couple of years ago before that. It, it was a school that people had been there a long, long time, and now the past two or three years, you know, COVID. We have about a fifty-fifty split within the school of new teachers and veteran teachers. And we can, yep, thank you. And so as we have, look to do any type of work, we want to make sure it's. Everyone has this kind of shared vision of going forward, not, I like to do this, I'd like to do that, I want to do this, I want to do that. I want us all to move forward in one direction. So we used something called a, an appreciative inquiry process with this group of individuals. The group of individuals is the whole JGS staff. But we can continue to. Move on that. These four prompts right here were questions that were taken from an, an appreciative inquiry. Piece of literature, we tweaked it for the purposes of the school and the, the situation. And so all of this went out, people in that school, everyone had the opportunity to provide feedback to each and every one of those questions. There's a big gap, I didn't include all the data, I took out all those slides, but basically what we ended up doing is we compiled all that data that came in, we found out themes that. Kind of emerged from all those patterns and themes that came, that emerged. We, you can just pull off on those for a second, I'll explain these slides in a minute, okay? Just the. Just go, just go back to the first picture. I'll get to that in a second. Just leave it there for a second, thank you. So the. We, we had themes that we'll look at toward the end of what really, they all wanted to see different in their school, in their schedules, in. How they did business with one another, in what they wanted for their future. Interestingly enough, a part of this type of process is honoring the strengths that already exist in the organization. And honoring the past, not just saying, hey, things, you know, need to be better, so we're just gonna scrap everything and go forward and think that that's gonna happen. We want to make sure that we're honoring what's been done in the past. And so it was kind of neat to bring back some conversations that we had the very first day that I was here with Jaffrey Grade School. Where we did some visioning, we said, in ten years, what do you think you'd like this school to be? And so they did some artwork, they put some things in writing. And a lot of the things, it was neat, a lot of the items, a lot of the topics that they had brought up back then were the same topics that we. Were looking at this time around to show that there's continuity throughout. And again, though people have come and gone, there is this kind of lasting hope of moving forward in a collaborative. Experiential way is what I would say the themes are. And it was also neat to see many of the things that we accomplished from their first lists. So we can go now through the slides, just, these are just some from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, just for your interest, so you have them. These are some of the pictures and the. The artwork, the dreams that they had back then as to what they wanted their school to be. And so that, we can stop here on this slide. Those themes that came out are in that green there of, of all of our work. Came out that collaboration, hands-on learning, STEM. Came out that collaboration, hands-on learning, STEM or STEAM. Uh, more in, you know, increasing the sciences. Common expectations and supports throughout the school district with, or the school with behavior. And then planning, P D, support. Increasing that capacity similar to what we've done here at the middle school, high school to make sure that there's ongoing support, ongoing collaboration and so forth. So I have to give um, some credit to Ashley Flamino, Ashley Flamino is the. Um, well, this is her first year in the, in the role, but she's the, she's been here for like fifteen years and most, mostly at Jaffrey Grade School. And she's the assistant principal of both of the elementary schools. And so in looking at this, she put together this concept. Of which, which is a concept that is out there and we've talked a little bit about. Whether it be multi-grading or multi-aging or something like that, this doesn't get us there, it gives us the capacity to go in, in other directions later on. But just grade band concepts, so making sure that this is all about making sure collaboration takes place. And making sure the teams are, have enough people on them and enough support to be able to make. Decisions to be able to group and regroup kids and, and to do what they need. And so. The idea was kindergarten, grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, and then there would be a set of teachers and. An interventionist and a special educator on each team. And then in order to make this all really work well. We needed to look at our specials a little bit differently. And so we've done that. And since there was a theme of wanting more STEM, wanting more science. And looking at the population and one of our classes being a little bit smaller than we had anticipated for next year. Um, changing up and, and doing a pilot with a STEM program for pre-K through five as well there. And we have, without adding to the budget, we can, we can do that and we have the personnel to do that and we have the people with the degrees and so forth to do that as well. Um, something that we might be able to in the future, if it works out well, you know, put across into the elementary schools in general. So by doing this, there's a lot more to this, this is very quick. Going to the next slide. This, what this model does is, it supports teams. It supports collaboration. Um, by proper scheduling, which is the next step that we have to do, it provides actually more time for teachers to meet in a collaborative manner. Um, by, by using our unified arts or what some people call specials programs in a different way. Um, those, those people would also get together and have collaborative time to be able to design. And work with their students in different ways to have shorter periods or longer periods as needed. Um, to, if, if you have, say, a pre-K class, maybe you want a thirty-minute class, that's fine, we can do that, we can back-to-back some thirty-minute classes. Or we can take an entire hour for someone who says, I really need to do this, this project. And so, okay, you take this group for. Um, in art for an hour, I'll take this group in STEM for an hour, so that we can really go much deeper. And so it gives the flexibility to the group and it gives the decision-making like our. Um, third slide, I think it was, shows back to the teachers in the, in the building and the teams. So that they can innovate and build and look at data. And that time is embedded in the day as well to look at data, to make decisions and to put interventions in place. Or to support kids in ways that, um, if they need more. For instance, they don't have remediation needs, but they have needs where they need to go further. Um, whether it be faster or deeper into content.
Is, is this like a scheduled thing, like you're, are you proposing block scheduling for grade school?
It's not, it's not, it's, it's, it has scheduling implications, it's not a block schedule. No, it's just what it was, what it's doing is making sure that all of those grade bands have the same planning time. And a lot of their, uh, for the most part, those fourth and fifth grade students, for instance, would have common. Uh, learning times so that, um, they could. Group and regroup the students as needed. It, for now, will probably be a pretty traditional. Um, typical what you would see right now type of approach. As they go through the year, I would expect that they will create and. Then consider what they can be doing in the future. This is a model that allows flexibility of that nature. It would allow for multi-grading if you wanted to have like grades four or five. Together, if you wanted to do that. Um, none of that is planned for next year, just the same single. Grade levels, um, but they were very clear that, um, because we have almost always. Uh, had at least one or two multi-grade classes and that's been done because of class size. They were very specific in this process that we don't mind multi-grading, that's not, that's a whole philosophical reason why you would do that. But let's not do it because of numbers, let's do it because we think it's better for kids. So anything that we do, we want to have a system that we're, we're going forward and doing better for ki- what's better for kids, not because we happen to have. You know, uh, eighteen kids over here and thirteen kids over here, let's figure out the best way to do this. So gives us future innovation capacity. Um, and it increases communication and targeted P D support and so forth. If you have all your teachers in one location at one time during the day, you can target. The support to them at that timeframe. And when you have small, num- smaller numbers of groups. They're all there, you don't have to do it eight times, you can do it three times, for instance. So it's a, it's a system. Um, benefit as well. Okay, so we continue. This was the last survey that I closed on Saturday night, uh, as we, again, this is a, a quick. Conversation, there's been a lot, a lot more to this and we have individual conversations with teachers just happened this afternoon. About the possibilities, it was really invigorating, very exciting. Um. Just, you can see that the people who took the survey, there were about sixteen individuals who took the survey. Um, half of them were classroom teachers, a quarter of them were unified arts teachers and another quarter. Were individuals who were either special education teachers or, or, um. Or title one. And so the third question there talks about, um, are you excited? Do you feel good about this? Um, you don't really have an opinion right now, or I'm a little nervous, I'm not necessarily against it, but I'm a little nervous, or please don't do this. Um, because we, we said that if, if this school isn't ready, if the teachers don't wanna go forward and do this, we don't do this. Um, because, uh, that's not, it's not gonna work otherwise. The majority are, you know, fell into that. Kind of second category where they feel good about moving forward. Um, there were several, there were a couple individuals who felt like they were just concerned, not necessarily against it, but just, you know, they have. Some uncertainties. Uh, others who are really super excited, gung ho for moving forward. And then a couple, um, who don't have. Who, who are fine with it, but just kind of like neutral at this point in time. And then that last question, it said, should we move forward with this or not? Uh, yes, no, maybe, um, three people I think indicated, you know, maybe, and then the rest eighty percent or so said, yeah, let's get, let's get going. And so that is where we're at right now. We're now in the process of developing a couple, um, mock schedules. Um, will be, um, Ashley and myself will be working on those primarily, but we're gonna bring Deanna, the new principal into the mix as well. And so, uh, in this coming, the next week, week or two, and. Uh, Susan and Ashley have been working with all the teachers of telling, uh, you know, talking about where they're going to be for the following year. So there's been a lot going on in the past month at J G S. Uh, next slide. All right, so that's what's happening at J G S, this was just kind of fun and off with it, it was a senior prank. Um, several of them, I think they were all tasteful for the most part. Uh, I walked into a meeting at eight o'clock in the morning on a Friday and I couldn't have the meeting. Um, in my location because, uh, their nickname for me, as you might be able to figure out due to my hair and the color of it and, um, my time. Sometimes it's been spikier than others. Um, so they've called me Jack Frost and that's been fine, I, I think it's all, it's been in good fun, at least I'll take it that way. And so they, um. Put Jack Frost pictures everywhere, um. All over the office, outside the door, I have tapes still, like in all these different places, all over the desk, there are more pictures. Um, you don't see an entire wall over here, but, uh, and then just a nice little note, we will miss you. Uh, class of two thousand twenty-three, so, uh, really cool, of course, I'm definitely gonna find out who these people are. We won't let them walk in graduation because they broke in and vandalized, but you know, no, none of that, all in good fun. Um, this is, that's just. Thought it would be fun to share.
Nice.
And then the one John's most, the slide John's most interested in is that final, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, he's like, alright, okay, that makes sense, okay.
RMS.
Yes.
What time is RMS just grade recognition? Is our, after RMS is not in the. A live calendar for June, there's nothing.
I know, I checked it out and did not see that this afternoon. Um, so Nick, the, this would be a, a good place to talk about the live calendar, the timeframes. I believe six o'clock. Is when J G S and RMS, I believe they're the same time, but if you can.
Yep, give me a minute to pull it up, um.
Let's see.
You said you didn't see it in the calendar, Charlie?
The RMS one was not on the calendar.
There was nothing in RMS for June.
Yep.
Okay, off the. Uh, if you give me a minute, I can pull up an email that has a time in that. Um, while I'm doing that, just to say a few things, there are a couple other high school related events that I can also pull up. Um, baccalaureate and the scholarship night.
Okay.
That's great.
Here we go. Six o'clock for J G S and RMS, five o'clock for eighth grade, six o'clock for C H S.
Thank you.
And the other events. We have baccalaureate, that's gonna be held at the Hope Fellowship, uh, excuse me, Hope Fellowship Church in Jaffrey at six P M. That is, uh, sponsored by parents and guardians of the class of twenty twenty-three. Um, on Thursday, the eighth. Um, we're gonna have award and scholarship night that will be at five thirty in the Pratt. So we have three events. Later this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That takes care of the seniors and then we have. J G S, RMS, eighth grade.
Was the baccalaureate on Thursday at six o'clock?
Uh, baccalaureate is Wednesday, the seventh.
At what time?
Block.
Six. Wednesday, the seventh at Hope Chapel, Hope Fellowship.
We'll go ball that over because there's other stuff on there.
And that's at six o'clock. And what was Thursday? That was the award ceremony?
Award and scholarship night. Five thirty P M.
Any, any other questions for, uh, me?
Um, just to, as we're on the calendar piece, just for those, uh, who haven't been here. Uh, you do wanna respond to Karen's invitations. Um, and let her know if you'd be, uh, cause at least at the graduation, the school board actually sits. Up front. It's, it's a very visible spot, so we're dressed accordingly, I learned that one. Um, but that's the only for that one, right? There's no other, oh no, in the eighth grade step up, the school board came up as well. Do they do that for the elementary? The elementary just said, and the awards night they just said, okay. Misexpectations.
Yeah, I didn't.
It did, it said at the bottom, uh, please respond to Karen's.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, that's why I'm emailing her right now.
Tell her I'll be there.
Yes. Please, which ones? The two, this is just for the, uh, awards night and the. We, please include.
The RMS.
Charlie. I'll just say to those as well. Alright.
Anyone else have any, any questions for Ruben?
Yeah, just one, you had mentioned at the end, I think I was gonna ask the question, I think, you know, with regards to what you. Were talking about with J G S there, it looks great, and I think. Taking the opportunity of having a leader leave and certainly. A loss for the school, but also a great time to, you know. Look at things and, you know, look at the possibility of making changes. I just wasn't familiar with, you, you mentioned that you were gonna get, uh, Deanna involved soon. Like what, what is her current status? I guess as far as like involvement in these plans.
Well, we've been in contact all along through, throughout this process and, um. But the actual, like, schedule work. Will actually sit down and work on things together.
Yeah.
Um, so that she has a hand in that piece. Um, I talked to her this past Friday and Saturday, I think it was just about concept, concepts and so forth and. Um, philosophically, it's all, we're almost.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that was just my only concern, knowing that, you know. Talking about setting forth on maybe a different path, making sure that she was aligned and then.
Yeah, this, this provides, uh.
A framework.
A framework for being able to move in a lot of different directions.
Great, alright.
Okay. Well, if there are no more questions for Ruben, then. Thank you, Ruben, for the update on this and, uh. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Are you sure? That's still another chance if you have questions about this whole J G S, J G S modification.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to anyone offline, online, anything, there's, it's, it's actually fairly involved and would take a lot, a little bit more time to. And discuss.
That's what it seems like.
Yeah.
We got the.
You got the cliff notes.
All, all right, so I guess I drew up to ask a question. What about RMS? How does this affect RMS?
Doesn't impact RMS, RMS has a, their schedule all set, they, RMS had a great year, um, they are moving forward in some neat ways. Um. And, uh, what, how it impacts it indirectly is, uh, some of this work at J G S maybe. It, you know, as it goes along, maybe that's something that there's elements of that, that maybe RMS would like to do. Um, there is a possibility, um, this right here. Allows us a little more capacity for doing some curriculum work all the way through the course of the year and so. RMS is certainly gonna be involved in that curriculum work as well, you would do it in one school and not the other. And of course. Um, where they're gonna have to have conversations about is on those release days, do they meet grand, uh, sorry, grade level. Um, like grade one, grade one, or do they meet in grade band? Uh, levels of two, so. That will be a conversation, but the principals and the assistant principal and so forth can hash that out, I'm sure it will all work out well.
And they're still gonna do the P L Cs, the time, have they, P L C time, cause combined schools and.
Yes, come on, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, uh. Thank you for bringing the report to us. I was gonna study this a little more closely, but. Got here a little bit later, that's right. But I trust we'll come back to, to this because it is part of. Our, our strategic movement, right?
This aligns, um, uh, very well with the street design, um, that was, you know, put in place in two thousand eighteen. Um, it. It stresses. Collaboration and teacher leadership.
Right, yeah, I, I liked Kim's question about the block scheduling, because I, I at first thought that too, but I could see. That you're not really talking about that, but you are talking about trying to create collaboration spaces.
Yes, yeah, I mean, there are some. Blocks that they have to get, I think they're probably the block schedule, because, because of the way that. That rectangle is with the bands, makes it look like that's a schedule that really has very little to do with the schedule. That's just saying that those groups of individuals are gonna have common time to work with one another and their kids will be learning. Math, science, social studies at the same times. Uh, uh, having recess at the same time, having lunch if possible, a little bit, a little bit hard with third and fourth, because that is a, a, a large, sorry. Second, third, that's a larger group of kids. So that will have a little bit of a variation with it.
And one more question, there's no reduction in staff with this model?
No. No, just utilizing the staff differently. Uh, actually increasing, increasing learning opportunities. I would expect also, especially with my conversation that I had, Ashley and I had with a, a teacher today, um. Um, the goal in, uh, for instance, in fourth, fifth grade would be to really look at how we can utilize this to. Um, strengthen our science, our math, our literacy and so forth. I think there's some very, um. Powerful ways to do that in ways that actually create. Uh, an easier path for teachers as opposed to having to do everything. Individually on their own.
And also. Schedule an opportunity.
They, yeah, there will be.
Whether based on class size, based on other things.
And at some place down the road, should they say, hey, we really think that this will be more efficient with a multi-grade type of. Like, uh, teachers actually teaching classes of two, three and so forth like that. Um, that could happen, that is not what is happening, you will have. A third grade teacher, a fourth grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, et cetera, the same way it has been done uh, this year. That being said, there will be times when they will be mixing and mashing based upon needs. And possibly interest, especially with the unified arts, who for the first time will be able to integrate with one another as well.
Okay. If there's no more questions, then we'll go back to our consent agenda as, uh, as modified, as amended. And. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda as modified and defended.
Okay, thank you, Daisy. And I'll say, Charlie, thank you for the second, thank you, Daisy, thank you, Charlie. Um, discussion. You would, does anybody have questions about any of the items on the consent agenda?
Nope. I would like to say kudos to Carrie, I'm assuming it was her nickel and diming for the daycare center playground equipment. Holy cow, if you guys have looked at what she has pulled from the air, I am very impressed, Carrie. Very impressed, that'll be a very, very cool, cool addition and well-founded committee.
Not a question, but a statement, uh, during the budget season. This is just an important thing to follow up on, because this was a big conversation during the budget season, Leah Giles. JGS I L C teacher, we indicated we're, we're removing a, um, special educator from the middle high school. Cause uh, the, the way the numbers were shifting, putting that. Um, those resources over into the elementary school, it is, that will be housed at JGS, it is for both JGS and RMS. Um, this will be our pilot year for. Uh, implementing a I L C program for students who are, um, having more behavioral concerns of this regulation. Um, students who, the typical classroom is not working out for them and might be. Kind of a candidate for out of district placement, so this will be keeping those individuals inside. To be able to develop those plans, to develop very personalized. I would, I would go as far as a individualized programming for them, so smaller group of individuals from kindergarten through third grade or fourth grade. And um, so we're very excited to have Leah, Leah is about twenty foot, four-year veteran teacher. Um, her current location is Marlowe, New Hampshire, um, she comes out of S A twenty-nine, Marlowe is a smaller school. Or these teachers multi-grade and, uh, group and regroup and move and do a lot of things all the time, she's got some great skills. Very excited to have her, so that we were able to initiate that program, which we talked about.
The program that Jen Horn had presented.
That's correct, yes.
Good, great.
And uh, and Karen Reed. Came out of, uh, came here, flew here from Texas. When I mean, she moved into New Hampshire, um, when she saw that we had a job fair. So, that, that's outcome of a job fair, they're very cool.
Yeah, that is, that's great.
I have a question. Is this our new acronym for the middle high school, C M H S?
Yes, I believe it is. Going in middle high school, yeah. We talked about that last time and there was a bird floating around or something. A bird idea floating around.
At that point, by August first, that's what it will be, yes. It's not that now.
Uh, okay, thanks for that clarification. By uh. By July first, I assume, is that?
By July first, right, I was, I was just, yep, okay, yeah, you're right.
And we do have. On here, although it's not written, are you now, but an acceptance of an exchange student, a rotary exchange student. Uh, it's kind of exciting because this is another step of a local organization. Kind of coming out of COVID, uh, COVID hibernation sort of, or slowdown, you know, getting back. Into some of the programs that they traditionally been involved in, so. We have a, uh, in this case, a young man coming from Germany and uh. We're working on the paperwork now, including. The inclusion in tonight's consent agenda. Alright, so we have. We have a, a motion and a second, if there's no more discussion.
Uh, if I can say just one more thing, uh, the board. Uh, it's not written up here on this screen because it was added tonight, um, a retirement. Of a kindergarten teacher over at JGS, this individual has served JGS Jeffrey Grade School for quite some time. Um, I know her time in, in education, I, I think it's been here, but I, I'm not entirely sure, to be honest with you, I had to double check, I don't wanna say it, but twenty-nine years of. Of dedication, um. So I believe to the Jeffrey Grade, uh, School Community, and so, uh, thank you, thank her for that.
Thank you for mentioning that, um, Mrs. Busier was. My oldest daughter's first grade teacher and my son's kindergarten teacher and, um. And she was so very lively teacher, she. You know, launched a love of reading for my children, so I. I'm very grateful that you touched our lives in our district for such a long time.
Well, thank you, Christine, for those, those comments. And uh. It really is amazing to come to the end of a career and say, oh. To give that much dedication is kind of unusual in this day and age, right?
I think that the Jeffrey Ridge community has been very blessed. To, through the, really several years that when people, people have been here a long time, when they retire, they retire after thirty. You know, thirty-three years, thirty-four years, twenty-eight years, twenty-five years, those are, those are long periods of time for people to be in one location, especially nowadays. That, that doesn't happen, so. Um, it's great to have people who have. Served a community for that period of time and have had children and then those children, their children. Uh, in class.
And you think of all the superintendents and school boards they had to put up with, there are all those. Alright. Alright, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on to action items.
Uh, we need, uh, yeah.
Oh, you're right, thank you again for reminding me. Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Charlie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Abstain, okay, so that's a six zero one, yeah, on that one. Thank you. Alright, now we'll move on to our, uh, building maintenance trust fund request. Fifty thousand dollars for athletic fields upgrades, master plan. Okay. So we have been looking at. Upgrading our fields, uh, we feel very fortunate to have some of our, some very nice upgrades done over recent years. But we've got some land that we're not using to its maximum, uh, potential. Both in range and, uh, and here on this campus. And so this is a plan to try to, uh, review these different pieces of property, see what needs to be done. And come up with a plan. And I don't know if any of our. Uh, facilities committee members or, or Ruben would like to comment or add?
Well, just that we had a presentation last time we were here from the Athletic Committee, the Short Term Athletic Committee. Uh, recommending this, we, I actually believe we awarded this at the last time.
Yeah, the follow-up was just, I'm gonna pay for it.
Exactly, and so I think this shows that it would be out of the maintenance trust fund.
Okay, yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it hurts to, that last, that last sentence to just say that as a. As a, um. Motion would be fine too, even though we've already decided on the Gale Associates.
Sure, I can make that motion. This is motion to award the master plan contract, Gale Associates, not, not concede fifty thousand dollars to be funded from the building maintenance trust fund. And to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract.
I second.
Okay, so thank you, Christian, thank you, Karen. And if there's no other discussion, then, oh, yes, Charlie. That, this is to do the architectural work for these items.
Yes.
None of these items are funded under this, is that correct? Thank you for the clarification, good question.
I have one more, I have a question too, and this is a bit of a curve ball, but. Um, when we get this master plan. Will we be able to compare it in any way, shape or form with other master plans that have been developed? For instance, the bathroom master plan. So that the school board can decide if we want to start a capital improvement plan, which one would we choose? Would, would they be comparable? Another completely different things, athletics versus. But.
Well, it's a great question, Christine, and I think that it points to. Uh, a task that really is in front of us as a school board. Some people may remember that we had some feedback from. Town administration before. Our, uh, March meetings or February, and, and meeting in the March vote about why we didn't. Have a capital improvements plan. And in truth, the town, and this was the town of Jeffrey. The town of Jeffrey amended its process this year for capital improvements. Funding, and they did this by. Taking their whole list of capital improvement plans, I think they have eight or nine. Very cool, and they allocated funds for each of those. One of them was. Uh, you know, road equipment, another was road repairs, another was related to the utilities. And some of them were large, some of them were small, but they combined them into one warrant article with a certain amount of money. Allocated towards each of those eight or nine. Capital improvement accounts, and then it was voted on as one piece. So I, I think that that's what the town selectmen were. Sort of pushing on us to, to look at it, I think we. Need to give some thought to whether that's the approach we want to take and itself. How we develop the information to. Come up with that plan.
Yeah, I think this is a step in that direction, right, because what we're doing here, right, we're saying. You know, right now, we'd like to improve our athletic fields, but there's no way we can put that into like an executable plan over, let's say, like five years, right? Uh, and compare it to something else that we already have, so. What we're gonna get as a deliverable here is something like that, like, if you go. Uh, I don't know if it has the details, right, it's gonna have maybe a plan for renovating fields here, um. You know, you see all of these things, what I would expect to have when we leave this. Is a list of all these things with at least a rough order of magnitude of what those options are. Once we understand that, we can put that into an overall, you know, district capital plan, assess that against, you know. Uh, other facilities, capital plans, and then it'll be up to us to decide on what that priority is, but until we know like the costs and timing. Of those things, we, you know, can't even get started, so this is, this to me is a step in that direction where we could actually have. Uh, you know, a comprehensive capital plan, because we just, we just don't know right now, like. How much is, you know, we're, we're gonna have like dollar values and, you know. Lead times, things like that, that we can, you know, incorporate and then make that decision, right, because. Yeah, to your point, is it, is it more essential that we re-code the running track or have a new bathroom? I don't know, but those are discussions that we can have once we think, understand the cost of each two, right?
Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you, Christine, also, I just wanted to mention that, uh. Sandra is here again, and appreciate that, Sandra, because I know that a lot of this will, you know, fall into your domain and. You're here, I'm sure to get information and, yeah, so, thank you for being. Uh, okay. I don't think we voted yet, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? None, so I guess that we've got that seven zero. Uh, next on our action items, the. C H S Hollis Brookline Dairy Field Boys Hockey Group. Hockey co-op. Do we have anybody here from the, uh, Activities Department who wanna?
I know, keep looking.
Well, it's, uh, wait for a microphone, that'll be great.
Yes, um, for, for those that know, obviously, we used to have a, a co-op with Conval, um. Part, um. No need to discuss, um, but we went this year, this winter without our boys. Ice hockey co-op with Conval, um, but our boys had to go without, um, and so obviously there's. Uh, I've done some research, there, there are a lot across the state, New Hampshire, a lot of programs that are three teams. Please keep in mind that last year, uh, we fought the good fight that we thought that it should. The N H I A should allow us to have a four-team co-op so that we could have stayed local, um. And, and play with, with Val Mountain, Manadnog and Conval, uh, and Ben out of Keene, uh, but. Um, the Hockey Committee out of the N H I A and the N H I A voted against, uh. Making a new bylaw that. So you can't go any more than three teams, um, so. Did some research, uh, and found, uh, Hollis Brookline and Dairy Field, obviously as a two-team co-op. Uh, they've had really good success, um. Both athletic directors are, obviously, we, we had the conversation, are interested, um. And I think it would be good for us, uh, there'll be some, uh, things that. You know, I'll have to work on logistically to make sure that our athletes are able to get down to, uh, they'll be playing out of Nashua. Uh, but the practices and those kind of things, I did do some research, uh, with those parents that. That I, I thought would be, um, have a student athlete involved, uh, what they wanted to, and. And again, I think the whole thing goes down to the same thing that, um. That we be proactive and we create the opportunities for, for our students, um. For, for the sports that they, they want to compete in, so, um, and this is the best opportunity that we have right now. Uh, and everything would be very similar to what, um, the co-op was, uh, it is pay to play. Um, but I guess the biggest thing is going to be a little bit more of a distance thing, uh, for transportation, and those are the kind of things that we can look at. Um. But I, I think, uh, I think our student athletes will appreciate it because they will have the opportunity. Um, they'll be able to represent and they'll get to play the sport that they've, they passionately played for since the, since they've been little. That's a hockey thing.
I know.
I've lived the hockey world, that, that's, that's not going away, and travel is not. And travel is not going away from ice hockey parents, so. So that is what we're asking for, um, obviously, we need school board approval for us to move forward. Uh, again, I can't promise anything that we have to go forward. So that then we can petition to the NHIA as a three school co-op, so it's not a guarantee, but we have to start with. The school board approving that.
Okay, well, thank you. Heather, can you just, uh, refresh? My memory on the pay to play element of it. Well, how much of it comes from the? Individual players or their families?
So with Conval, um, there was a a big boosters group, uh, that. Came together, um, so we still have some money that we can borrow from our boosters that we did, um, some of our. Things, the pay to play, uh, this I like, um, we'll probably have four or five. Student athletes every year, um. Hollis Brookline will be the the host school and then for us in Dairy Field, we and and them, you pay by a percentage.
So the cost of what it is and they'll come here on the roster, so you're not splitting all of it, so then it goes full time.
How many we put on that roster? Um, and again, um, I'd like to to look at it, look at our budget and see, see where we're at, you know, those kind of things. And and how we can help if we can at all, but.
Yeah, does anybody else have any any questions?
Contact and conscious concept principal. Going with three teams. But before I approve anything, I'd like to see the agreement. So I mean, you should be able to go forward with the. Support and principle. This concept. Before I would say, yes, I want to prove an agreement without seeing it, I. And I'm hesitant about.
And in far as what we've got the poster going to be?
Well, as far as what agreement is reached between opponent Hollis Brookline Dairy. It's a cooperative agreement, and I'd like to know what that agreement says, that's all.
And it goes to that, right? So we really do need your, right, we can start with that, that in. We have to start the conversation, but we can't. Get it moving forward until you say that we can. Offer that opportunity to our.
Say, if you need the school board to approve this in principle and to start working on.
Yes.
I'd say absolutely, yes.
Right, we need, right, correct, that is what we need in principle right now, so that we can go forward and bring it to them.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the process to move forward with this plan for this collaborative. And I also want to say, um, a particular thank you, um, Heather, for for really doing the research to find this rather obscure. Yeah, this, yeah, I remember when the family first came to the school board begging for a way to play hockey with their kids and and. Just trying to find any way possible, um, and I'm really pleased, I'm sorry, we couldn't have it this year for the boys and. Really, really pleased that you fought to to find a way to make this happen, um, so, yeah, I endorse it wholeheartedly.
I second both the comment and the plan.
Yeah, well, thank you both for this. Comments. Okay. So, uh. We have a motion, right?
We had a motion and a second.
In a sec, okay, very good. Thank you. For all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hey, thank you, Heather. All right, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school district calendar.
So you've approved this already, um, but there are a few more changes or I say clarifications that we put into this. Uh, if I can have Nick explain some of those clarifications, uh, excuse me, those, uh, some alterations to this. Uh, mostly having to do with explaining what days are workshop days for paraprofessionals, we haven't done that. In my time, and I think that we wanted to be clear as to what that was, and so after some back and forths with. With all the schools and the SAU narrowing down, um, the days that we would provide professional development as outlined in their CBA. And what would be done during that timeframe was that that conversation has had, so we can plan ahead of time.
So I feel like this chunk of the calendar will probably best explain most of it, there's two major changes to this calendar. One is that you'll notice that there are now three purple days. Prior, we just said first day, now we also are showing the first day for kindergarten, the first day of preschool. That gives people that ability to just see that, we set those dates later on. Uh, for the last day, that's something we can also add and sol- uh, you know, solidify to the calendar. And then the second piece is you'll see that some of these teacher workshop days, now we'll say teacher slash para. So in the past, we've had down here. This very generic kind of spot that just says how many PD days there should be for everybody. This is teachers and it says instructional associates, we will have to also update that word to paraprofessional, so I'll make that note right now. But when it comes to the two major changes, we just wanted to actually show when a paraprofessional would be. Um, having one of those PD days, for example, here in March, those are two of them. Um, you know, if we really wanted to, we could delineate by color, but we get a little bit muddy if we start adding, you know, too many colors and we already have. You know, that many different codes for our calendar. Um, so it's those two major changes, it's the purple and then it's the, uh, additional, um, delineation of para workshops.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Just providing people more information.
So we don't have to act on this, or do?
Yeah, the calendar is something that you approve, this is a different calendar in concept, I suppose, not 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 in concept in a. How it's applied, so we need it changed.
I have a motion to approve the calendar as.
Good, thank you, Daisy. And thank you, Christine. Is it is, is there any discussion? And if not, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? None. Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to explain the next two calendars to Ruben?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so, um, again, this is the school board calendar for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We only have one scheduled meeting left after today for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, as you can see, we're, I'm at least proposing to keep the, uh, six o'clock non-public, six thirty public. Um, I'm proposing that we keep meeting here. Um, having the deliberative and branch. When it comes to the dates, uh, we traditionally will meet on the first and third Monday of the month. So in many cases, this is replicated, um, just going through the calendar and pulling those dates. Anytime that there's an an event in which we can't meet on our normally scheduled time, you will see. A note right here, for example, Labor Day, we're going to push up a week like we normally do. Obviously, if the board wants to do something different, that's up to you, I'm largely just carrying forward what we've done in years past. Budget development is on there, that becomes a little bit more fluid when we get closer to budget development, as are those, um. Budget hearing, first, you know, the deliberative sessions on and so forth. The deliberative and the public hearing, there are certain, uh, RSAs that dictate when we can hold those meetings. Again, this is me just doing best guess based on what we've done in the past, those may be subject to change, we get that ruling. Um, you know, a little bit later on in the year, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kerry Roderick will normally prepare a budget development calendar, and if we have to adjust any dates that are here into something new, we will do so. Um, there is that note at the bottom, we previously had a second page that had a note, but I just. Kept it really simple, turned it into one page, so this just carries forward what we've been doing more or less, meeting first and third. Monday unless there is a holiday, um, six thirty in this room.
Make a motion to approve. The draft of the school board calendar.
Okay, Lisa, thank you. And Daisy, thank you for the second. Anybody have any? Questions or concerns about what's? Nick has proposed to put together for us? Okay, seen that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, next calendar is the school board committee calendar, this is something I started trying to do last year as a way to better post. Our various committee meetings. Um, we do need to properly notice all of these meetings when they happen, that needs to be twenty-four hours in advance, excluding, um, I believe, weekends and holidays. Um, what I've done here is I've taken. The date that I've been told by the committees where I've had it, and if not, I've kept it the same. So it gives you the general, it gives you the committee, it says, you know, for example, education, second Thursday of each month, and as needed. That gives you your basic calendar outline for the school year, obviously, things are subject to change as the school year goes along. I do need to be notified of those changes so that these changes can be made, um. Just because we have to, again, make sure that we're posting properly, we don't necessarily have to have a full-fledged agenda. School Board Association Legal Council has said that in many cases, it's helpful to model whatever you're doing as a school board, also in your committees. So it could be helpful to make sure that we're having regular, um. Agendas produced. Um, so I don't know if all of these are correct or not, I don't know if the committee chairs and committees have had a chance to look this over. The biggest one that was kind of a shot in the dark for me was the, uh. School Board Goals Committee, this is quarterly for Thursday of each month. Uh, but then we had pulled to just the four meetings, I. Am open to hear whatever we want to do there, if we don't want to put it on the calendar, that's fine, we just need to actually make sure that I'm being notified of those meetings. Because we have had some issues where meetings have either been changed or just haven't been. Um, noticed, so just making sure I'm kept in the loop on those. You know, conversations of when dates are being set.
I would request that you remove any dates from that and simply put quarterly. That because it's quarterly, it really is when it's it's relying on so many other. Pieces to to be implemented into it, we do have a date for the next one that is agreed on by all of us, lovely. And when we get to the board things will.
Finance is good.
Yes, good.
I know the wellness committee is a different beast, but so I don't know that you'd be listed on this at all.
Wellness in, um, communication kind are school board committees, but they fall under like. Kind of a different. Classification because they're a mix of, they have school board representation, but they're not a full school board committee. You have a lot of membership that exists outside of it, we still do need to post and publish those meetings. Um, if there is a consistency in the wellness meeting, I'm happy to put it on there. I know that with like communication, there's not really a consistency there, I can just. I could generically put quarterly, but I think there's some language on the website that says, you know. That we need quarterly and so on, and I I know that for the most part. I believe it's Leanne will reach out to me for wellness, sometimes I think Heather does, um, to notify me when those meetings are taking place and we put that notification, um. On the, uh, appropriate webpage and then a physical location to meet those requirements, so.
All right, so then are there any further questions about the committee? Schedule. And Nick?
And I guess, uh, just another point of clarification, since we're here and we're talking about it. Um, I do have some that are outdated and I've been working on trying to put those up, but, um, any, uh, committee meeting minutes that have not been sent to me. If they could be sent to me whenever you have them, that way I can start making sure they're all posted, um, on our website so that people have that log of minutes. Um, I'm going to try to go through everything I have. And then send out an email to the board to just say, hey, please look at the page, if you don't have something, please send it. Um, but that's where we're at on that side as well.
Okay. So, uh. Just a message to all of our committee chairs to. Take a look and. Make sure that Nick has the information that, uh, they need to keep the website updated. All right, so then all those in favor of, uh.
I need to have a first and a second.
Okay. So. Can I get a motion then for the committee calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the school board committee calendar.
Thank you, Christine. And Daisy, thank you. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? None, okay. Thanks, Nick, for taking us through those calendars. And, uh. Now we're on the policy review. We've got ADP drug-free workplace and BID, the board member and district officer compensation. First review for both. Lisa, would you like to?
Yes, um, the ADB drug-free workplace is a, um, required. Uh, document that we currently don't have, this is, has been reviewed by the policy committee. And is good by us as the New Hampshire School Board Association as, um, has created. So we don't see any changes that we particularly want on it, so please read through it and we should approve it soon. Doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Second one, if, yeah, let's open that one, so we want to edit. The, uh, board member and district officer compensation and expenses. And we would like to change when the stipend is being paid to the first payroll in November, it had been the first payroll of December. This next one, we've dealt with quite a bit, this is the use of facilities, and I'd like to take some time with it, but I did. Ask Nick to put up a document side by side because the edits that we made at the last meeting did not get put into this. So, um, if you have. The policy up on your screen yourselves, there is some pretty major changes to it, um. So, pretty much on page three of the policy. Is it possible to do side by side, Nick, please? Thank you, and if you go, yeah, just go to page three of that. Thank you. Um, on here, the first suggestion is the price is, um, changing the priorities. If you'll notice on the current policy, municipal services and community services are separated. As we kept going around with the town and the community services and ourselves, we kept realizing that. These should not be separated, what we're, what we're looking at is keeping elections separated. Um, but as far as a priority, it just did not seem that there was enough of a difference that, uh, it just kept pushing. Pushing people in different places and it didn't make sense, so we are proposing that we create on my edits sheet. Municipal and community services, meaning athletic events, craft fairs, scouts, civic organizations, et cetera. And all of that being priority four. And then businesses being, uh. The for-profit entities, priority five. Then going down to. Oh, bad, bad timing, okay. I will read it out while this is happening. So we talked about at the last meeting, creating, um, memorandums of agreement. And, uh, that had very positive reaction both from the board and from the community people. Who are who are involved in this, and so. Who are, who are involved in this. And so the paragraph would read, um. Coming up next, where we talk about, we do talk about the waivers. But they're not as, we want to keep the waivers. Um, there's, there were some administrative, um. Feedback where the waivers that we come in currently have are working. There are situations where the waivers are working. And. The memorandum of agreement would have some restrictions within, so. What it would look like is groups and, and I'm reading from the, um, Google Doc now. Groups and priorities four and five, which are municipal services, community services and businesses. Are eligible to be charged fees related to the events held at JRCSD facilities. And then. Do you see where it's underlined municipal over on the Google Doc? I would want to keep this underlined. It was very important to the policy committee that this sentence be highlighted in some way. Municipal and community services may offset costs through a memorandum of agreement to be reviewed annually. Okay, but visible, we want to make sure that this in the policy doesn't get lost, okay? If no agreement is reached, these groups may submit a petition to the school board to have fees waived. Fee waivers will be reviewed by the school board at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Waivers will be granted or denied on a case by case per event basis. The fee waiver form may be accessed here. I underlined here, there's no active link there. Trey will make that active. Okay? Now, page four, there were some edits that needed to happen soon after that. In specialist, it's, um, on the requester submits event request page. I changed that to reflect what we just said. Event requests must be submitted at least fourteen school days prior to the requested start date. Groups that desire to reserve space with less than fourteen school days notice. May petition the superintendent for approval to submit the event request. Then highlighted again, we want this noticed. Um, event requests may not be made more than four months in advance. For groups and priority three, four and five. We, this was taken from a couple of other. Policies from different school districts that recommended four months be the, um, maximum. That could be requested. And it was also, it was in my mind, Heather, when you were saying, how do we possibly plan? That athletic events that happened for spring term when already. The rec department has asked for something eight months in advance, like, no, that's not reasonable. And so when we looked at other school districts, we saw four months. Okay, that makes good sense to me. Um, so those really are the two changes that we thought would accommodate memorandum of agreement. And we already have had. Um, the town of Ridge put forward a sample. For our review of a memorandum of agreement, they thought looked good. So it's, looks like the process should work pretty well. Any questions on these edits?
And Heather, how does this all look to you? I know that you're. About this.
Again, I, I. I can't make predictions. I mean, our numbers are, are huge. And so if we're going to continue to do what it is, I guess, it's great that we. You know, um. And then I, I'll, I'll say it. Um, we're making the, the changes to like the frat. It'll make it easier that, um. For custodians, because I don't think that that's what everybody is digging into account. It's the, it's. The staff that is overworked with us not charging fees and that everything is turned around. Will it help? Yes, that we now might have bleachers that we can push a button and the bleachers can go in and out like, but. That's on the back, so bleachers and turnovers and stuff like that on. Your activities director, your custodians and those kind of things. And I, I just don't think that people understand that, um. But, sure, I will make it work. I just, and again, I have to agree with Daisy. I can't. I can't tell you what our numbers are going to be and how much space we are going to use during certain season. I mean, no different. And, uh, we talked about the spring. I have a soccer coach that, you know, he wasn't coaching in the spring, but. You know, he wants his team to be great in the fall. And he's like, hey, Heather, can we use lower field? And I have to say, no, I have javelin throwers. Those kind of things. Like, everything is overworked in those kind of things. So we will. Clearly do the best we can.
Well, couldn't we have the soccer players go out there with the javelin throwers and sign they play?
But, but we don't know that, right? I, I don't know how big, I don't know year to year and, you know, there's there, he's got. Middle school throwers now. I mean, our, our track teams and different events will continue to grow in those kind of things. So. So yes, I, I understand with the school and I know we have to have a policy and I will work around it. I just. I worry about some of the turnovers and, and our facilities getting beat up and stuff like that. And then. Again, I go to it, the custodian's not being able to keep up with the maintenance of, of, of a lot of it too.
And we had talked about it the last meeting, um. We're watching this very good. Like, this is the first year we tried monitoring it. And it was eye-opening to me talking with the town of Ridge. The town rec, the Ridge Rec Department, the town of Jeffrey and the Jeffrey Rec Department. In this process, we've been speaking with all, you know, the four. Community entities that are using it. And all of them said, well, we actually haven't had maybe more than one conflict, like that's, so. Some of this is trying to fix something that might be broken yet. And yet, yeah, but we want to make sure the thing that started all this was the custodial. Was the facility was in depreciation of our property. And there's our responsibility in this. So hopefully. Having this conversation and going back over the last ten months. We're getting to a point where we're feeling responsible for it and all this.
But I will bring up one more thing though too, and I saw that there's fob fees. I'm still not really understanding how we vet some of the people that we allow into our schools. So I, I'm, I'm big on that, right? Because there are times where I don't know these people and they're in the, in the schools and I don't, you know. I don't know who they are, which is odd and it happens a lot at RMS.
So, so. Our thinking was that MOA was an opportunity to do several things. One is if we know what service we. And town's gonna need to get budgeted for it, so we don't run into the issues about funding. The, the second thing that we thought about was, uh, the issue you just brought up was. Was we can, uh, specify in the MOA what. Security issues or what security procedures has to be followed. We don't want somebody in RMS who's running a pro, uh. Basketball program who has their own fob, who hasn't been vetted. I mean, part of the, the agreement might be that we require the rec department to have. One fob and one person to manage that within the rec department, but we own this on them. Or we can say, hey, you can't let anybody, uh, no one can have a fob and use this unless they pass our vetting. So we can go do the background check and all that stuff. So that was part of the thought of the MOA.
And we're trying to make sure that. Our, uh, overactive activities director has all the tools and facilities she needs. Uh, we do appreciate hearing about the impact on our maintenance staff because we know we've got to take care of them too. And at the same time, we're trying to take care of our community and. Continue to be an even more welcoming place than, than we have been and, you know, so. It's a work in progress, right?
Yeah, a couple of questions, um.
What is the current plan to start charging fees? Is that like? You know, postponed to a certain date or is it, or we're? It is in place. Have we charged any fees yet though?
Well, we've had any for-profit groups.
No, we haven't had anything. Um, then I guess just my understanding of it, it sounds like the, one of the main problems is that custodians can't keep up turnover, a lot of events. But what are the, how do the fees help that? Like, how did the fees get direct? I don't know. I don't understand how that solves. If that's the problem, I don't understand how the fees. Solve and overworked custodian. Maybe it does.
Well, they can provide for funding for someone to commit on a weekend. They can provide overtime funding for those individuals. So it's. It's saying, hey, these individuals have a job, they're do their job and then all of a sudden they're responsible for also the cleanup of, uh, fairly.
That's what I wanted to hear is that are they being directed toward some sort of fund that's going to be specific to that or is it general or, I guess, undecided?
Well, anything.
It also might be prohibitive as well. I mean, we've had the policy to charge fees for a while now.
Right.
And we haven't had that many for-profit groups. We're not a free-for-all.
Right.
So it just, it simply might also be prohibitive. You know, it might, might be protecting us.
And the MOAs are going to be approved by the school board or what's the plan for that?
We should, we should have it. It's tied to the school board policy, so we should have it in front of the school board. Yeah, I mean, even the MOAs we have with, for instance, Franklin Pierce are all signed by multiple people.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
If, if you're gonna do one that's really meaningful and you're gonna stay true to it. We should have as many people in agreement as possible.
I, I just wanted to get a question, bring up the, the, the questions are, si- situation is, the middle school has a. Dance on Friday and, and custodians, everybody does. Custodians try to do their best, right? It ends, but their, their shift ends. Saturday, we have. I don't know, craft gear, we have basketball, we have something that's not ours. Somebody else comes in, right? We don't pay anybody to be there because we don't charge any fees. And then come Monday morning as our students go in. Has everything really been cleaned up or is that the taxing on that staff to start? Trying to clean on Monday and play catch-ups to follow those things. Where again, we're playing catch-up and then. In the frat, let's just use the frat as an example. Then all the custodians are trying to catch up that week, but then I have. Every day I have.
The normal stuff.
I have a basketball, you know, we have PE, but then we have at night, they can't really get too caught up because. I have three basketball games that week. And then, and then it continues to go on. Um, so what Ruben just brought up, there would be sometimes, maybe we do have to pay. Custodial staff extra on a weekend to have it get set for each week. I just want to remind people, especially at the frat. That is where we have PE every single day. Regardless of, of what we do after school. And what we do on weekends. But how do we keep that up to?
And we really wouldn't know. That level of usage, because we haven't tracked it. And that's what came to us, yeah, a year ago, like we as a board don't know. And, and, and it was just getting, you know, where are these gaps happening? So that's what we've been trying to, that's exactly what we've been trying to address. You know, what is the actual usage? What is the conflict happening? Um, you know, where, where do we need to step in and make sure things are clearer and more transparent and usable, you know? And that our relationships can stay healthy, yeah.
So, one of the things from priority perspective, you'll notice up there that. Student activities, athletics, et cetera, all have a higher priority. Than municipal services or community services, okay? And the, the idea there is if we're gonna do any of those things. Student activities, athletic graduation. We need to schedule them and book them, okay, so that the. Municipal services and the community services then can book whatever's available. So if, if we're good on our scheduling and, um. I'm terrible at scheduling, but if we're good on our scheduling, uh. We should be better off. With an MOA than we are today.
Okay, well, it's an important and tricky. Process to work through. And I'd like to give thanks to Lisa and to the policy committee very well, well. Put your minds to it and try to get a handle on this.
I think Trey also probably.
Trey did much of the language of this, um.
Yes, right. And, and, and also to, uh, to, to at least, I need to, uh, kind of grab openness and through. You know, whatever challenges as we have to do this. Okay. So as all of these are first reads, we'll bring them back. That'd be the plan for their next, uh, board meeting for. Okay. Thank you. Uh, board committee updates.
Goals committee is gonna meet.
Well. Education committee is gonna meet on the exact same night as the board committee.
What time?
Goals, I mean, four thirty. On thirteenth. Sorry, guys, I'm, I'm, I'm on power.
Goals committee, back to the drawing board.
So these committees are gonna meet later this month.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So these committees are gonna meet later this month. The third Thursday at four o'clock. Public walk.
Right. And, uh.
Policy committee is gonna meet on. Tuesday, the twentieth at four thirty.
That was finance.
You, you were talking about, it, it does begin with an F, it's close, but. Yeah, but facilities walls will be meeting what, two weeks from today. Yes.
Just a clarification on the goals committee. Is it possible to meet earlier since school is out on that day? Is that a possibility? I know that there's the education committee at four thirty. Is there a possibility of meeting at three?
Sounds so fantastic. Love to do two in one night.
Well, earlier, I was thinking earlier than, I don't know.
July thirteenth. July thirteenth, I have. At four thirty. So the goals committee meets at three thirty. I can go up both of those.
Three thirty for goals committee is one hour enough?
Public report made for that timeframe.
Okay. On July thirteenth, three thirty, going once. Going twice.
Nick, are you gonna be able to keep track of all this? Provided in minutes.
At four thirty, okay.
Keep track of.
The, these, uh, the, the committee meeting dates. Gone over the schedule for next year, but. We have some adjustments that were.
Yeah, I mean, so Lisa said to pull the, um. Goals committee dates from the calendar. I can add in that first one and just say meet quarterly.
Thank you.
Sounds like so far everything else is according to schedule, so I don't need to make any changes.
Okay, well, good. Uh, you know, I'd like to thank everybody who's working on these committees and, and organizing them. It is a lot of work. That's why we pay you a big bucks.
We know you do, John.
Alright, um. Yes, that's, that's perfect. Uh, if there's nothing more on. Yes.
Yeah, um, we did have another communication committee meeting between the same ones, like, correct? Or did we already have?
Yeah, we updated on the last time.
Okay, so we got both of those, as gentlemen.
The course selections are happening within the edvail system and will. Should have by now gone into Alma. So that they can. Double check, no mistakes anywhere and then. Get schedules sent out. Um, the goal is to have draft schedules for in hand by the last day. Um.
So wait. So that means no step up day. Right?
Talking about. Students, what is scheduled for next year?
Right. Is that, that's the question I asked, right? What I was saying is this is, you're talking about like next year's schedules for the students are gonna be in hand by the last day. That means no step up day?
They are have, I think they're having a step up day.
Like the step as in, um, and I don't recall calling the same thing where they go through their schedules. Like a mock next year day is that we're calling step up day? Is that what I'm saying? The same thing? Is it right?
I think that what you're talking about is, is.
So when is that date?
But I don't. I don't have, I don't personally have that day with me. And, and the agenda for that day. So that's a question that we can find out the answer to.
Yeah, cuz I think that was like a big thing we had talked about where. It was, it was really important for the students to do, and the only reason we didn't do it was because we were using. Otis or whatever, and that messed it all up. And then I was assured that this year will be different because we changed. Programs, so the kids will be able to have a day. To ease the anxieties and the thoughts. To do a mock day. And I keep asking for the date and all here is maybe.
So when we, that on Thursday, as we were in the meeting.
Hmm.
Uh. Don't remember it goes, however, who it was that said it, but as we were in the meeting, she got the email. They EdVale had approved. Whatever.
Hmm.
Plan they had.
Hmm.
And that it was getting added into Alma for them to double check. And so her hope was that. Between Friday and today, they would be able to go through it all, make sure that there weren't. One teacher teaching two classes at the same time.
Right, right, right.
Or a student in two classes or a student just missing something.
Hmm.
So that everything was. Good to go.
Hmm.
And then she would be working on getting schedules out to everyone.
So is there, so you're talking about before the end of this school year.
Hmm.
Having kids be able to see their classes and walk through which other districts do. Is there anybody who? Like, is there an admin that can speak to this? Is there somebody online at this?
David was supposed to be getting on. I sent him an email, but never heard back from him.
Uh, I have a hand raised from Jen Horn. I don't know if that's. Oh, we'll see if that's on this topic.
Thank you, Nick. Why don't we give Jenna?
Yeah, cuz I, I do remember that too, that this was a big issue with the, with having that ready.
Alright, Jen, you should have the ability to speak.
Hi, yes, I, I can give you a little bit of information and this just comes from. Teaching within the school. Wednesday is what they're calling fly up day instead of a step up day. Um, so that Wednesday is the scheduled day. I believe that's the day that the fifth graders would be coming up to sixth grade again, I believe. Um, and that they'll all do a mock schedule of and, and have the opportunity to have a feel for what the next. Fly up would be for all students and that would include. My understanding is for all kids to move up. Their schedule has not been put out, so I'm not entirely sure what it looks like. But that is the hope and I, as recently as last week spoke with. Um, Kim regarding scheduling and it's. Close, it just keeps running. They, they, they're running into some difficulties that were not foreseen, which is not uncommon. So. They're close to having the schedules, but there will be a fly up day on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yes.
And that's just. That's just for the fifth grade meeting, the middle school.
I believe it's for, um, fifth coming to sixth and all the way up. So six to seven, seven to eight, that's it, that's it.
Should be stepped up all the way.
Yeah, that's my, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. So Wednesday, this should happen.
Thank you, Jen.
Can't wait. Sounds good.
Okay. So again, thanks everybody working on the committees. I, you know, there is, uh. There are a few other things going on. I don't know if we call them ad hoc committees, but Ruben did refer to them earlier in his. Report, but I think it's. Worth. You know, mentioning again, because some of these things are things that affect us or that will affect us if we. You know, pay attention to them or potentially will affect them. And one of them is this route two O two committee that's looking at what should be done with that land. Should we keep it in the district and use it for some purpose or for multiple purposes? Big decision. Then there's the question of the CTE renovation, which. We don't know at this point, could that bring a million dollars to? Help fund projects here or could it bring seven or eight million? We're, we're sort of in the process of thinking about that. That's why the. Is gonna be. Later this week, probably a, uh, review of the proposals from the architects. So again, we're all busy with a lot of things, but this is something that, you know, could have some. Impact on the district. These, these items, we're also talking about. The feasibility of solar and possibly putting solar as a, as a money raising, uh. Um, activity for the district. And I know Christine working today to try and get the committee together from Ridge that, that's, uh, you know. Raised the idea with us, but. There's also people in Jeffrey wondering. You know, whether something could be done out there, so. This is all a value to it. It's all tentative at this point. Some of it is less tentative than others. But, uh.
Yep, in our next, next, maybe last, but the next for certain, um, Wednesday, our next meeting will be. Bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination group, uh, parents. Learners, myself, or other individuals, staff members. I've been working on that. We do have language to go to the policy committee on preventative measures. Uh, that school can take. And so our next step is to look at. Uh, supportive measures after something. Uh, takes place. So certainly preventative measures really focus a lot more on education of the community, especially around technology. Uh, as you know, if we have more and more so, schools are having. Uh, behaviors not necessarily happen at school, but it happened at eleven, twelve o'clock, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, whatever that is. And it comes into the school that we have to. Work with, so, um, giving some parents some tools as well to be able to work with some of those scenarios.
Could I ask, um, if you're meeting with them shortly, um, would you please invite them to our June twentieth? Policy meeting?
Yeah.
Anybody that could come and speak to, I would love to, like, I, I know that you will be able to. Speak eloquently to it, but boy, would I love to meet some of the people who've been working hard on this group and. Especially if they're coming forward with some, with some recommendations, that would be really neat.
Yep.
And again, that's a, those, these are public meetings. Anybody would be welcome to, to come and join us for that.
Yeah. And these other committees that we've been talking about, apart from the, the steering committee, um, that will get very inclusive, um, was just. The route two O two is very kind of a niche type of thing, but the other ones are wide open advertised for anyone who wanted to join. Um, from the community, for all from the school community anyway.
Yeah, and John, on that, on that topic of these kind of subcommittees that come out of committees, one of the things that. He brought up at our last communication, well, I know I brought it up at our last communication committee meeting. Was just the topic that I brought up a few times, you know, that's. You know, a school board member, but I also happen to be a. Fifth grade parent, a sixth grade parent, so, um. The idea around kind of middle school image and transition from fifth grade to sixth grade and what we can do there as a district. Um. You know, I have some thoughts around that and, you know, definitely. Think that may be worthy of, uh, you know, the subcommittee in the, in the coming years, and certainly, you know, volunteer lead that. Um, you know, I've kind of used. This year and talked to a lot of people and, you know, in my conversations, kind of use it as a barometer for how. You know, how necessary, uh, it is. And, uh, I do think it's worthy of kind of further exploration possibly, so. No real action there, but it's something that we're talking about in the communication community.
Yeah, and I did, um, look at the calendar and we did have a meeting in between last board meeting and this meeting, which is where some of that was discussed.
Yeah.
Um, so we had met really close, just make sure we got that fourth meeting and before the end of the school year, some people indicated they might not be able to participate in the summer. Um, that was one of the things that was discussed was perhaps creating some short-term committees. That come out of communication to look at specific, um, projects or things like that, um, you know, one being the middle school, um. Work and how we can maybe create more events, do more things around helping that transition from elementary to middle. Um, we're also talking about doing another survey. I have to finish putting that together to get that out. But we want to ask different types of questions. When we did the twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty one survey, those questions were largely mirrored and the attention behind that was to see. How much we grew over the span of two years? So we now have that data to show that we did a lot of growth and we did a lot of things that people wanted. But now we're kind of in this place where four years out. We're doing a lot of communication, but are we still capturing people in the way that they want to be captured? Are we? Um, delivering messaging in the appropriate way? Are we doing the right type of messaging? So rather than creating a survey that's, hey, how are we doing? It's more of a survey that could hit like, what do you want to see? What do you need more of? What are we doing too much of? How do you feel about newsletters? How do you feel about things being sent to your house? So just more tiered towards that type of thing and that now we have these foundational things more or less in place. We can progress and then looking at. We have some goals that are on the current plan that were on the original plan and they still haven't really been done. And some of the question is, okay, do we really need those or have we captured those in other ways? Um, are there certain things that we need to expand upon, grow upon? Are there certain things that we just? You know, it's not important to our community anymore. So that's kind of the big focus. We had talked about meeting a little bit over the summer to. You know, have that survey, get some data. Potentially start this smaller middle school group that would have a certain defined membership and goal to meet so that next school year we could have some good. Um. Planning, you know, done. So there could be more meetings of the communication committee over the summer, maybe some different formats based on what people can or can't do. Some people said they. Don't have as much availability over the summer, but we'll find a way to get all that stuff continued to be, uh. Worked on. So again, next school year, we can just, you know, hit the ground running.
Great, thanks, Nick.
Nice.
This boost.
Chris, um. The new JGS principal talked quite a bit in the interview process about the importance of. Getting JGS fifth graders and RMS fifth graders together to help that transition to middle school, so. Um, I'm certainly not the position to volunteer her to join your committee, but certainly you should talk to her as she comes on.
Not just about. Them each coming out, it's about however to ease that transition.
Yeah, three years worth of time.
Yeah, you can start, you know. As early as you'd like, I suppose. But yeah, that's great. That's great to hear.
When we discuss that idea, we have some of these leadership groups that are between like middle and high school and can we kind of potentially find ways to replicate that middle to elementary? Um. So just different ways to think outside the box, do different things.
Alright. Thank you, everybody, and, uh. A lot of work going on, my committees, on both our standing committees and. Subcommittees. Ad hoc committees, so. Thank everybody for their effort and also. Don't burn yourselves out, please. Do as much as we can and. Try to buckle and. Um. I think we should be ready for, uh, public comments second time, so.
Alright, well, I'm back again, whether you like it or not. Um, so let's, uh, just go over the rules real quick, just in case. In person, you need a microphone, first name, last name, town of residence. If you're online, raise your hand. You can do that at the bottom of your screen. Make sure you adhere to our policy. I'll work on pulling that up as we, uh. Talk and, um. Yeah, we'll just queue people up as they, uh, feel the need to speak.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So. Um. Corey, anything else?
I think. I just, it's really.
Miss Lynn Sted, this actually would have been for you earlier. I had, I had something to talk about, but you know what? It's late and I will get in touch with you. Later about this, so. It's not fair to do to you or any the rest of you, so.
Well, thank you for. For hanging in there too. Nick, what about online? Do you have anybody who has raised their hand?
I am not seeing anybody.
Okay. Well, uh, what about board matters? Does anybody have any board matters? Obviously, we've got. Graduations and stepping up coming up. I think we'll be. Be busy, hopefully we'll. Do the best we can to be there for as many of those events as possible. I know the community really appreciates it. I think they see us there.
You know, I, I guess I do want to respond to Corey real quick, though, and just thank you for coming. Um, don't, don't feel like you're wasting our time and or that it's not appropriate for you to bring any concern you have. That relates to the kids, you know, that's.
We'll take this opportunity to tell everybody.
There's probably nobody online, but. I'm usually the only one I can be here and I can be a representative, but people need to show up to board meetings cuz. I can't do all this by myself. Um, and it's not even about my child, but I care about the kids and I know all of you do too, and I know you do. I know you don't know what I'm talking about, but you, you will, you will, you will, um, but thank you, thank you for acknowledging that.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's coming to board meetings if you want. It's, you know, we all have email addresses, right? There's, there's ways to get in touch and that. We're all, we all seek that. You know, direct feedback, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's much more effective than. Um, you know, just hearing things second and third hand. I certainly appreciate. Um, you know, when people address their concerns directly and then, then we can act on it.
Yeah, I try, I try to do that and some of you I've reached out to.
That's great, and that's great to hear. You gotta understand, we can't necessarily act on like things that we hear from somebody.
Exactly.
But.
Which is why I'm here.
Great.
Great, great, good place to start.
Good example.
Okay. I think we need a motion to go back into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go back into non-public.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
I second the motion.
Daisy.
Thank you, Corey.
We're in a roll call vote.
Hi.
Cam.
Hi.
Hi.
Did you second?
I.
Basically. Alright, so the roll call would be this thing here. I have it all situated here. Um, Charlie.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Kim.
Yes.
Daisy.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Christine.